And welcome to the July 18th, 2023, meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting, please identify themselves to the record now by standing and stating your name and city of residence. Seeing none recording, FATV would also like me to advise the public, particularly Comcast Xfinity subscribers, that as of August 1st, government meetings such as this one will be moving from Channel 99 to Channel 9, as Channel 99 will no longer be available for public access. This is as of August 1st, FATV government coverage will move to Channel 9.
Are you saying that is that just for Comcast or is that for Verizon too?
Apparently Comcast Xfinity.
Okay, alright.
Alright, at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent Councilor Schultz, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
To the flag, in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilor Schultz?
Here.
Councilor Squallia?
Present.
Councilor Van Hazinga?
Present remotely.
President Zarella?
Here.
Councilor Boishman?
Here.
Councilor Kuchar?
Here.
Councilor Cragan?
Councilor Cruz?
Here.
Councilor DiNatali?
Here.
Councilor Fleming?
Here remotely.
Councilor Green?
I'm present.
Thank you very much. Public forum, there is no one registered for remote public comment. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak may approach the center podium, identify themselves by name and city of residence, and the item on the agenda which they would like to address, and may then speak on that item for not more than two minutes.
Jacqueline Wedge, Pittsburgh resident, speaking on Agenda Item 205-23. The Health Department headcount for 2019 was 13. It hit a COVID high of 26, and this year was supposed to be 19, but here come the rest of the positions. It's a permanently entrenched bureaucracy. This is what causes inflation, spending regardless of need. The grant is for contact tracing and no one does contact tracing anymore. There are thousands of viruses on the planet and they will look for one to trace. It didn't work out with monkeypox, but they'll latch on to something. God forbid the budget return to normal. A primary purpose of contact tracing is to order people into quarantines, to make them prisoners in their own homes. In Massachusetts, and only Massachusetts, public health officials went so far as to secretly install spyware on people's phones to track their movements and proximity to COVID-positive people. In Pittsburgh, the Health Department went after a church first, and then the kids too poor for private schools, and then the people in public housing. But the mayor got a pass when he broke the rules. With this grant, they're gearing up to go after us again come winter. And yet, when adjusted for population age, Florida had the same COVID outcomes we did. In Sweden, which also didn't impose COVID restrictions, excess deaths were lower than they were here and were the lowest in Europe. All the violations of people's civil liberties, all the learning lost in schools, all the damage to our economy was for nothing. And they seriously want a quarter of a million dollars to do it all over again?
Further public comment at this time?
Hi, Jessica Jacobson, Pittsburgh, Mass. I'm here to speak on 205-23. Some of you on the city council like to run this place like a dictatorship, and you really don't care about the freedom of medical decisions for us. You've proved that through many different council meetings. The Health Department likes to run these programs by lying and bribing people to come to get the shot. And now you want us to be contract tracinged. The most concerning about this is putting in here is the EEC licensed program, so now you want to also go after our daycares and intimidate the licensures to play the contract tracing game. And then also you're putting in here K through 12 schools, colleges, and universities. You know, you're already in our libraries bribing kids and lying to them during these things. I went to two of them and you guys lied to us, and you lied that there was no adverse reactions to children in the age group. You said it was safe for my son to take the COVID vaccine, and that there would be no harm to him. No one can guarantee that. And then on top of it, you had Great Wolf Lodge tickets you were raffling off, four different bikes, and a pizza party, which we couldn't participate, oh, and a $75 gift card if you came and took the vaccine. You're aiming towards the poor population who can't afford these things. And that's shameful. So shame on us for doing that to the poor people of Pittsburgh, who might not be able to afford a Great Wolf Lodge trip, and then you're gonna make them take a vaccine to win it. And then on top of it, lied to people going, "You didn't even have a vaccine insert to any of the vaccines." There was no information about the vaccines except for one piece of paper with a QR code that's not a confirmed consent.
Any further public comment?
I'm here to speak on 205-23 and 213-23. It was kind of late coming out, so I believe I'm within two minutes, but I'd ask for your indulgence. I stand in opposition of 205-23.
We do need your name and city.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary Jean, 499 Electric Ave, 112. It is crucial to address the concerns regarding the unwanted pushing of vaccinations, particularly among the vulnerable, the population such as the poor, the homeless, and the foster care children. Why would Pittsburgh want to be in charge of 13 communities for vaccination? Why? Will Pittsburgh City Hall become a doctor's office? The Pittsburgh Health Department is larger than any surrounding community. At the end of the grant, once again, will the Health Department be in front of the city council to make it a permanent position? We see that the once grant-funded, now taxpayer-funded opiate outreach council involved in accusations of registration of homeless people to vote at non-residential addresses this week. No city employee, as far as I know, except for the city clerk, should be registering people to vote, but I tell you, I will stand by our city clerk. I have no doubt in my mind that she would never put a residential address on a commercial location to vote, and anybody who thinks so, it's not gonna happen. For all our Facebook warriors, please try to remain calm. A disaster is not the time to grieve, to address our grievances. Obviously, the city was not prepared with information for this disaster. No information was available that I could find on the city website on Sunday. My house was flooding, and I looked for help, okay? This administration had no way of communicating with the public. In the land of milk and honey, they do. They have a system that notifies all the residents who simply sign up for the list. And this system is great because it calls you at your home, it tells you what happened, it tells you whether there's a road closing, a school closing, or maybe an emergency like we just saw.
Your time has expired.
I really think we need to deal with it. And I will just go quickly, that I find that this issue on 213, where the mayor has come down and asked for emergency spending, we just went through the budget, we were $1.8 million short, we went and used free cash. I have to talk on the other one, and you were late. I just don't believe that the free cash should be used for this purpose, and I'm ending my conversation.
Sorry, your time has expired, please take your seat.
Thank you, I will.
Thank you. Further public comment at this time? Seeing none, we will proceed to our agenda. We have two announcements. The next three meetings of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place Thursday, July 27th, Thursday, August 10th, and Thursday, August 24th, from 4:00 until 5:30 p.m. in Room 203 at the Pittsburgh State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate these three meetings. The city clerk, Joanna Bellotta, would like to remind residents of the upcoming preliminary election being held on September 26th, 2023. All candidate nomination papers need to be filed at the clerk's office by Tuesday, August 8th, 2023, by 4:30 p.m. And the last day to register to vote for the primary election is Saturday, September 16th, 2023. If you need any assistance in either of those two tasks, please reach out to the clerk's office. We have an excellent staff who will be able to help you. We will now hear the report of the Appointments Committee. Councilor Kuchar?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Appointments Committee met earlier this evening. We took up three, well, three new appointments. The first was Permanent Full-Time Firefighters for the City of Pittsburgh, Francis J. Le Blanc and Brendan V. Byrne. Also, we also took up appointments for the poll workers for the period of September 1st, 2023, through August 31st, 2024, to be sworn in during their training sessions, all of which were approved unanimously.
I have word that one of our councilors needs to recuse from the second portion, so can we please take this in two separate votes?
So moved.
So I have a motion to approve the report as to the firefighters?
Yes.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and second to approve the report of the Appointments Committee pertaining to the full-time firefighters. If there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. And I'm just going to ask that we vote the second portion before we call your guys up.
Okay, Mr. President.
Can we now, I believe if you need to recuse, just turn the camera off?
Thank you, Mr. President.
And then...
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, it is approved unanimously. You can return now, and we will now have Chief Suarez introduce our new firefighters, and we'll have them sworn in.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, council members. And thank you all again for this opportunity to present to you the top two candidates, to fill the two vacant positions that we currently have on the Pittsburgh Fire Department. The first candidate is Francis Le Blanc. Francis Le Blanc will be replacing Lorenzo Calderon, resigned in March of 2023. Francis is a Pittsburgh resident who resides on River Street. He is a licensed DMT, and also a licensed electrician who has a thorough knowledge of building construction, which is very, very important in regards to firefighting. The other candidate is Brendan Byrne. Brendan will be replacing firefighter Alessandro Ciocconi, who resigned in May of 2023. Brendan is also a Pittsburgh resident who resides on Phillips Street. Brendan will be leaving the Gardner Fire Department to come join the Pittsburgh Fire Department. With that, he brings a year and a half of firefighting and EMS experience. He's already graduated the Mass Fire Academy Recruit Program, and is also a licensed DMT. So both of these candidates are licensed DMT, they have passed their background checks and their medical examinations, and are both following a lifelong dream. We're very excited to bring them both onboard, and I have no doubt that they will bring with them the professionalism and dedication that the city, its residents, and the Pittsburgh Fire Department expects. So once again, thank you all for your time, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Councilor Boishman?
Just wanted to say I'm very happy you told me to have heard from Pittsburgh. Very happy.
You're welcome.
As long as they stay in Pittsburgh.
They're gonna stay, I promise you that.
I actually have one question myself.
Sure.
Are you related to Joe Byrne? Okay. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, the order that the chief introduced you two in. Gotcha, gotcha. Alright, so we'll clear the bench, as is typical, and we'll have our new firefighters sworn in. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you. Mr. President, thank you, councilors. And I just want to say that as Francis and Brendan go around thanking all the councilors, they also want to thank the councilors that couldn't be here physically and are here remotely, so thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Congrats, welcome aboard.
I don't have to use this right COVID's going.
Make care of yourself and be safe.
Oh yeah, you didn't get the notice?
I didn't get the notice.
Yep, old Uncle Joe put out a notice, it's all done now.
Alright, we'll return to our agenda. Next, we have the report of the Committee on Records. Councilor Boishman?
Mr. President, Niagara Falls was beautiful, I just want to tell you that. For the meeting of July 5th, the records seem to be in order. I watched the whole thing, very good.
Thank you very much, councilor, very diligent.
Will you approve the report?
Second. I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, it is approved unanimously. Next, we have communications from His Honor, the mayor, a Resolution Number 213-23. Whereas on July 16th, 2023, the City of Pittsburgh experienced significant rain, including up to six inches of rain within a three-hour period, and whereas extensive damage was caused throughout the city by flooding and erosion stemming from the aforementioned rainfall, and whereas there has been and continues to be an immediate threat to the health and safety of persons and properties within the city. Therefore, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31, the city council hereby declares the existence of a local emergency affecting the health and safety of the residents of the City of Pittsburgh, and enters an order to permit the Department of Public Works, the Fire Department, and the Police Department to engage in emergency deficit spending in order to meet the emergency caused by said rainfall, and to take all necessary and relevant steps to mitigate against anticipated future rains forecasted for July of 2023. Mr. Mayor, would you like to say a few words?
I simply want to reiterate what you've said, Council President, that this was an extraordinary weather event. And contrary to statements that have been made, we were prepared. I amassed the fire chief, police chief, DPW commissioner, the MEMA director for our Fire Department, Pat Haverty, he's here this evening, took a tour of the damage that we incurred at that time, and we took the proper action. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, questions, comments? Councilor Boishman?
Does the mayor have any clue how much money it's gonna cost by going into deficit?
We have a ballpark figure, councilor. I would rather not throw out numbers right now because that's a fluid amount. And part of the discussion could be tonight, if you wish, how we're gonna approach this. We can do a quick repair of what needs to be addressed, but then you stand a chance of it reoccurring. Or we can take the other approach, which is what I would approve, and along with some of the staff, certainly the auditor and the solicitor agree, that we're gonna make that fix certainly permanent.
And the commissioner as well.
Matter of fact, Commissioner Erickson is on remotely, and he can answer any questions further than that, councilor.
Actually, thank you for reminding me, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Erickson, would you like to join in the discussion?
Thank you, President. Can you hear me?
We can.
Alright, excellent. So as you're all aware, on Sunday, July 16th, the city received somewhere in the ballpark of three and a half to four inches of rain during the course of the day. We have rain gauges throughout the city reporting various amounts ranging from three and a half to well over four inches. One great rain gauge in particular reported a peak intensity during a one-hour span of roughly 2.25 inches of rain. And during that same one-hour period, the highest 10-minute period during that one-hour span was 0.95 inches of rain during 10 minutes. So Chief Suarez pointed out to me during our site visits to some of the damaged areas on Sunday, that one inch of rain is approximately equal to 10 to 12 inches of snow. So if you can imagine one inch of rain falling within the span of 10 minutes, picture a foot of snow falling within that same period of time. So that helps paint the picture of what we were dealing with on Sunday. So there were certain areas of the city that were hit particularly hard, and most of the damage that we're kind of sorting through right now is the result of undersized and overwhelmed drainage infrastructure. Two areas in particular, one on Franklin Road at the intersection of Rollstone Street, and the other on Hobson Street in the areas just downhill in between there and Water Street. There was extensive damage to the drainage system, the roadways, sidewalks, berms, et cetera. Our crews have mobilized to try to stabilize these areas as best as possible over the past day and a half, two days. But the extensive damage is beyond the means of our DPW. We have a skilled staff, but some of these repairs require equipment and skills that we just simply do not have. So hence the request for an emergency deficit spending. We plan to utilize outside contractors to come in and help us repair that which needs to be repaired, and do so in a way that will leave the city less vulnerable to future flooding issues in these areas, particularly with the culverts that were either undersized or damaged during the storm event in the Franklin Road and Hobson Street areas. We've talked to residents, and they expressed a similar desire for the city to make permanent repairs instead of temporary patches to address these issues. So that's the reason why we're before you here tonight. Happy to answer any questions that anyone might have, and happy to visit any areas that receive some damage that we're not yet aware of. So if any of your constituents approach you, please feel free to pass along their message, and we'll work to visit with residents, address their concerns, and repair the damages as quickly as we can.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilor Schultz?
Yeah, I talked to Commissioner Erickson yesterday, and I agree with the mayor and Commissioner Erickson that I saw a lot of the damage on Hobson Street and Haywood Street, and it's extensive. It needs a permanent repair. And I talked to some of the residents, and they said the same thing. We need to repair Haywood Street permanently and Hobson Street. That culvert that Commissioner Erickson mentioned on Hobson Street is just, it's in really tough shape, so I agree with the permanence of the fixes. Thank you.
Councilor Squallia?
Thank you. I agree with the permanent repair, the need for it, but I would like to know an approximate cost that we're looking at, and approximate timeframe of the length of the local emergency. Commissioner Erickson?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. If DPW is not able to hire outside contractors due to funding constraints, then the timeline for repair will be extremely prolonged and will be forced into a patch versus permanent repair approach. If we're able to bring in outside contractors, the time in which we can complete these repairs can be significantly reduced to weeks versus months or years. And the extent of the floodproofing that we would be able to implement would be a lot greater than just providing some of those patch repairs that we're talking about here. So Hobson Street, for example, that culvert's overflowed twice within the span of a week. So it happened last weekend, and it happened the weekend prior. It happened once again back in 2018. The culvert's undersized, the upstream channel is full of debris, and vegetation really needs to be cleaned out. So that would be one of the major investments that the city would need to make to create some resiliency with this type of rainfall event. Same goes for the culvert that collapsed over on Franklin Road just in front of Nicotus Field. That runs from Electric Ave underneath Forest Hill Cemetery, through the intersection of Franklin and Rollstone, underneath Nicotus Field, and then over to Park Hill Park. That culvert is in fairly good shape along the upstream half, basically from Franklin Road upstream to Electric Ave. But downstream, the entire bottom of the culvert essentially has been washed out. My concern with that particular culvert, because it runs beneath the cemetery, is that if it collapses and floods the cemetery out, we could have a very disastrous consequence. I don't really want to get into specifics during this meeting, but it would be ugly. So between that culvert and the Hobson Street culvert, we're talking somewhere in the magnitude of hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of dollars to properly repair those, to make sure that those types of failures don't happen again. We're not able to complete those repairs with in-house forces. We just don't have the equipment to bypass stream flows, we don't have the equipment to dig such large excavations, we don't have the skills with our internal staff, which is comprised of mostly new employees. So having the ability to go out and get a contractor to help us with these repairs will mean that we can get them done properly, we can get them done a lot more quickly, and we can make sure that these culverts are improved to the point that they're not gonna become a worry for future rain events. And I think what we're... a lot more quickly, and we can make sure that these culverts are improved to the point that they're not going to become a worry for future rain events. And I think what we've seen over the past several years is an increase in very intense precipitation events that overwhelm our stormwater system. The majority of our stormwater system was designed and constructed close to 100 years ago. It consists of pipes that weren't necessarily engineered for the storms that we're seeing today. And if we project that rainfall out into the future, we're anticipating the condition to worsen. We're expecting these types of rainfall events to increase in frequency. So every time we go to work on these systems, we try to build in some level of resiliency. A good example of that is with the combined sewer separation projects that we're undertaking right now. Since I've taken on the Commissioner role, every combined sewer separation project that we've designed and constructed projects our stormwater flows and size of our system that's needed to handle those flows out to the year 2070, which is a significant effort towards floodproofing. And I think that approach needs to be taken anytime we look at replacing culverts such as Hobson Street and the culvert that runs from Electric Ave to Park Hill. So those are the types of design considerations that we'd be able to implement if we were to be able to go out and hire an outside contractor to do this type of work.
Thank you. I appreciate that declaring the existence of a local emergency would allow us to hire outside contractors, but really I'm wondering what the expiration of that local emergency would be. Is that something that is per statute, or is President Zarela?
So Counselor, my understanding, and the city solicitor can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, is that this particular emergency is not defined in terms of how long the work can continue, but in terms of what event it's directed towards. So on the current wording of the resolution, it would be the rainfall events that we've experienced and the projected future ones through the end of the month. So it would pertain to repairs aimed at those specifically. And so once those are done, it becomes inoperative. It could last however long it takes for DPW to fix it, because, you know, we certainly don't want them running out of money halfway through. But I don't believe there is any specific time-based constraint on it. But again, I would defer to the solicitor on that subject.
So this council's vote tonight is to declare emergency to permit deficits, emergency deficit spending. And I'd be happy to be corrected, but this council can also vote to conclude the emergency deficit spending. The current plan is to contract immediately forthwith the repair process that we need to. We're obviously not going to be able to make all those payments out within a week or two, but we want to get that contracted right away. So within this week, we're hoping to have design and construction crews bidding and putting in some estimates as to the costs.
So process-wise, this allows the deficit spending, and will that spending still come before us for our knowledge and information and/or discussion?
The appropriation to pay the bills will come back before you.
Yes. I think those appropriations would come when there is a point at which we have a sum certain that we know we need to appropriate. In terms of the length of the emergency, I think based on the mayor, the resolution here, it's through July of 2023. So I think it's anticipating that there is rain coming this week, and that the time it's going to take to address these problems is going to be till the end of the month. So it's going to encapsulate the next few weeks.
Counselor, wait, well, hang on a second. I have a few people in line here, but let me...
My last portion was the estimated funding. For the two culverts that Commissioner Erickson suggested, it could be millions, but then there are, you know, other multiple areas of the city that were damaged significantly. Are we looking at potentially, you know, between, I don't know, 500,000 and 5 million, potentially?
I think that's a potential, that's certainly a potential.
Is 10 million a potential?
I don't think so. No, I don't think so. I mean, they've been working on coming up with the estimates today, and that will be part of the submittal, if you do vote in favor of this declaration, a general scope of the work and an estimate of the cost will be attached to that, submittal to the Department of Revenue.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Van Helsinga?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know it's been asked a couple times, but do we have a better figure for the estimate of cost? I think, I understand that we need to do this work. I understand the argument that we need to do it right rather than just patch it if we can. But I think we need to understand the scale. Hearing it's between 500,000 and 5 million is a very broad scale. I mean, are there any estimates or better estimates that we can have so we have an idea of what we're signing up for?
I think if Nick Erickson is still with us, I defer to him. I haven't seen that communication yet.
Yeah. So I've been putting together a list, a preliminary list, of all of the affected areas and anticipated costs. They're very, very rough numbers, and there's still areas of the city that we have not fully assessed. And I'm sure we're going to continue to find issues resulting from the storm that pop up over the next several weeks. But based on what I've assembled so far, I'm at just over $4 million worth of funding necessary to repair the stuff that's on my list right now. That includes all of the areas that we've discussed tonight, and then a few others such as Daniel Street, Martell Street, areas where we had large washouts because of the overflowing drainage system. Like I said, there's going to be other things that we find over the next couple of weeks as reports come in, as we're able to fully assess all of our systems. But that's where the numbers are at right now. And those are based on relatively conservative estimates, just to make sure that we're not shortchanging ourself. But I have run rough calculations for all of these numbers, and they're not simply just a ballpark figure that I've thrown out there. They're based on lengths, widths, surface areas, volumes, footages, et cetera.
Thank you, Commissioner Erickson. If I could ask Dr. Cronin to come back to the lectern. I guess we haven't approved deficit spending since I've been on the council, so could you walk us through where does this money come from?
Okay, so the emergency spending option allows us to spend to address the needs of the emergency, and it does, it would have a beginning and an end date, which I think it states here is the month of July. It would allow, it would allow the procurement to take place immediately to get these, to get this, to get the equipment and contractors on the ground. It also allows us, in terms of, we will have to obviously pay this back or appropriate to fund all this. In our options, it allows, in the statute, by addressing this as an emergency disaster, it allows us to borrow up to 10 years, based on your capacity to repay. But also, we'd be looking at what, you know, whatever we have available in our budget, which we know is very little. As we get to the fall, we'll have an idea of what our free cash looks like, and we'll also have a sum certain of what it is, what this deficit will be. There are also, well, I guess I should have said at the outset, we will be applying to FEMA if, you know, if this will qualify under their rules for reimbursement. So that's the hope at the beginning. I should have stated that at the beginning. And then the last resort really is stabilization, and that's the order in which we usually, you know, address any funding. You know, what do we have available? Do we need to borrow? And then the stabilization fund right now has a balance in excess of 8 million. It's right on target to where we're supposed to be. It should be 5% of our operating budget, so we're right on target there. So anything that we do draw down from there will have to be replenished.
Thank you. So the option of last resort would be the stabilization fund control. What would be the impact on our borrowing costs for our...
I don't have a figure for you at this moment. I will be doing a debt study to incorporate, you know, any future borrowing that's anticipated. And then that's where, like, this isn't going to be appropriated really until months later, maybe in the fall when we have all of our facts. We don't know what the number is. We don't know what's available to us right now. So, but it will probably be before you, before we set the tax rate, because it is deficit spending. The Department of Revenue is going to want to see us appropriate that before we set the tax rate. So it will be before November.
All right. Is there any long-term impact on our budgeting requirements in terms of DPW spending for future fiscal years?
I didn't catch the question. A long-term impact on...
Budgeting requirements for future budgets in regards to DPW spending, or is this something that's treated as nicely?
This will be handled outside of the DPW budget proper. I'm sure they'll try to use whatever they, I'm sure some of their overtime or whatever will, you know, they'll pitch in a little bit. But yeah, this will be outside the typical budget process.
Okay. And you mentioned the possibility of getting reimbursement through FEMA. Are there any other, has there been an emergency declared by the state or anything like that that we could...
No, there is no emergency declared by the state. I'll defer to...
May I, please?
You may.
Thank you. So we don't believe that this is going to qualify as a reimbursable expense from FEMA at this point in time. However, we're still working on that. There's a couple of rules or guidelines that they're going to use to operate that we see that could potentially exclude this event from that. Massachusetts Emergency Management has been counseling and advising to work with our local delegation and with the governor's office to work out a line item in the Commonwealth's budget to provide for reimbursement. This is something that's been happening with the prior administration, the Baker administration, and Mayor Dean Atawi's already been opening that conversation with the Lieutenant Governor at this point and with our local delegation. So matter of fact, we have a meeting set up shortly to further explore exactly what that would look like. So as far as reimbursement goes, well, we're going to look at FEMA. We're going to look at what is an event, which is primarily what the issue was. The event Sunday? Was the event the last couple of weeks? Was the event Sunday, today, and this Saturday? Whatever the event could be, historically that event is a typical storm, singular storm. So that may exclude us from FEMA and likely will. So that brings us back to the line item budget in the Commonwealth's budget.
And I appreciate that those conversations are happening because this is a serious amount. This could weigh about half our stabilization fund. This is something that's going to put a strain on our ability to pay with free cash if we have those funds available.
Because we're already using, considering free cash to balance the budget. So I think we do have to do the work. The damage is there. We do have to repair it. It doesn't make sense to do it right and to mitigate future damage on this type of events. But it is concerning. And I just, as we're just continuing to make it, as this information comes in, and we have more idea about what the cost, the efforts we're going to require to prepare this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Krujer?
Thank you very much. I just have a quick question. But first of all, before I ask my question, I want to thank the DPW. I also want to thank the Police Department as well as the Pittsburgh Fire Department for everything they did during this disaster, especially the emergency management team who was out there pumping out culverts. They were pumping out basements. They were doing their job and doing it very well. I was out there myself during the storm assessing the damage, especially in my ward, but I also took a ride around the city, and it was quite the event nonetheless. My question is, is it stated in the resolution that this is to mitigate against anticipated future rains forecasted for July of 2023? Here we are entering into hurricane season, and considering the, how saturated the ground is considering all the rain that we have gotten, can this extend into future, you know, say if we get a decent hurricane in August or September, will that...
May I answer the question?
Go right ahead.
No, we would be issuing a new state of emergency. But the fact that you have just pointed out, this is the dry season.
Yeah.
So it's very concerning where we're at, and that's why I'm just grateful we have Commissioner Erickson taking the aggressive approach that he's taking.
This is why, considering the summer of 2023 is the soggy summer, because it just seems that that's all that we've had is rain. And any more rain, I mean, considering where we stand right now, I don't know if we can, you know, accept any more rain, to be quite honest with you. But I yield the floor. Thank you very much.
Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Most of my questions were answered by Dr. Cronin already. I do also want to reiterate that I think, you know, it's appropriate not to slap a Band-Aid on to do this right, even if it does cost somewhere, it sounds like in the ballpark of 5 million bucks. I am curious, since we have our department heads here, the Chief and Fire, how will this appropriation, what sort of efforts will you be taking in the next, through the end of July with this appropriation here, the emergency spending?
What was the question?
I only heard part of the question, Counselor. Can you repeat that for me?
So you're also included here in the resolution as to accepting emergency deficit spending. What sort of stuff will that be allocating?
I still didn't hear. Sorry.
He was asking about the supplement budget, how it would help your department.
Well, that would help us in manning staffing. For the storm on Sunday, we had to bring extra response in, extra staffing. So of course, that costs overtime because it's above and beyond the current staff that we have. Fortunately, as Counselor Krujer said, we have the CERT team, which volunteer their time, and they did a tremendous job. So Pittsburgh Fire Department, I know the residents of Pittsburgh, we're also very, very thankful for them. But it mostly comes down to staffing for us. That's the main cause, major cause. We're pretty good with equipment right now. Fuel is another cost that could come up on that. But for the most part, I think it would just be staffing.
And I would concur with Chief Suarez. The biggest aspect that came from the Police Department was staffing. We, just like every other department, we were forecasting, we saw what was coming. We were actually calling in shifts ahead of time. More importantly, we were doing our best to overstaff our dispatch center with additional resources because we knew the influx of calls were going to be great at that point. So any type of emergency spending would come in the form of, we've spent a lot of overtime in the last month just for large events. So that would be the impact from the Police Department. The Chief made a great point about fuel. When you're putting that many resources out in the road, you're utilizing more fuel. So I could anticipate the fuel consumption is going to go up, and anything that can help offset our current budget, our FY '24 budget, would be extremely helpful because we're going through an alarming rate of overtime and consumption of fuel very early in the season, being just the first month of a new fiscal year.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, just a follow-up on that.
Yeah, you have something to add?
Just, you know, some of this spending can be consumed within a just-approved budget. Counsel, you just approved this budget. And so a lot of the overtime could just simply get eaten up on our next rain event. Tonight was not that bad so far, and then maybe on Saturday, something else. But then we would be back at some point in time. So the mayor's decision after talking with Nick Erickson and the departments, just to get in front of you and say, this is what's happening right now, and we're going to cut into that, that just recently passed budget. So as far as overtime spending, fuel, can't leave these guys in alert and then coming back later. Just, we're going to address it now because we're in an emergency. Ideally, those will be reimbursable costs as well. Coming in, talking about this and identifying this as an emergency, tracking the costs that were incurred in connection with this emergency is going to put us in our best situation to look for the reimbursement when we work with the governor's office and our local delegation to get a reimbursement. Let's keep our fingers crossed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a few observations.
Could I finish my, I still have the floor. Could I?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you would yield the floor. I apologize.
No, it's okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Cronin, so you sort of laid out the order that we would pay this with, whether it be free cash, borrowing, or the stabilization fund. Sometimes we talk about stabilization fund as the rainy day fund. We just had some dangerously rainy days. So why wouldn't we dip into stabilization? So why wouldn't we dip into stabilization fund? I know, I know it had effects on our bond rating, but I don't think we're in a position to borrow any more money anytime soon.
No, that's, it's definitely on the table. I think that's more the typical way you would try to approach paying for something. I'm not saying that we wouldn't do it. But if there are other ways to accomplish it, then we'll avoid it, especially if we're going to have the MEMA. You know, if we find out that we're going to be reimbursed, we certainly don't want to have already appropriated out of a stabilization. You know, we'll just wait and see till we have all our facts, I think.
And I can't imagine we'll have anywhere near five million in free cash. So the anticipation is borrowing the five million.
Correct. Well, there might be a borrowing authorization just to get us through the setting of the tax rate. We'll see what happens. And then we can rescind that and fund it from stabilization.
Okay. Thank you very much. I yield the floor.
Thank you. So yeah, I'd like to make a few observations. And then I've got a couple of questions. But first, I'd just like to note that in keeping with what the solicitor was saying, I think one of the key advantages of declaring this now and operating it as deficit spending rather than trying to operate out of the current budget and then backfilling the costs later is that it's transparent. Everyone on the council, everyone in the public knows that we have this cost that we're expending, that it's outside our usual budget and that it will overrun our existing budget. Whereas if we just told them, you know, hey, use your existing budget and then come back to us in the fall when you run out of cash, then we'd be getting an order on the agenda in the fall saying, we need a lot more money because we spent it all on that emergency back in July, which I think to the public would have been a fairly nasty shock. So I appreciate that it's coming forward this way. I think this is the proper way to do it. I also want to say it sounds very much to me like the city did everything it reasonably could have to anticipate and mitigate this event, short of saying, hey, we're going to rebuild all our storm drains and culverts in a month when we've been working on it for a decade. I don't think there was much else that could have been done that wasn't done. It really sucks that we have to spend $5 million-ish now to make these necessary repairs. But no one here in the council, no one in City Hall had any way to control the weather or to predict that we would get the kind of rainstorm that literally has not happened in a very long time. I can't put a date on it, but the particular amounts of rainfall that we were hearing about, you know, you think about an inch of water across the whole city, not just an inch in a bucket, an inch across the entire topography of the city in 10 minutes? I could be wrong. Maybe the chief could correct me, but I suspect that's a significant fraction of the flow rate of a fire hose coming down on the city of Fitchburg. This is, this is not, you know, someone left the shower running. So anyway, that being said, I do have a couple of questions. One is roughly the same as Counselor Cruz. Just, I guess if this isn't what we're supposed to use stabilization for, then I'm a little sketchy on what it is there for. Because I always understood it to be, this is so that if something comes up that could not have been anticipated in the budget, we can pay it without having to borrow or go into any kind of debt or deficit. But it's entirely possible that I've misunderstood that because I am not a finance guy. And I see Counselor Dina Towey's hand up and his head shaking and I will yield the floor to him in a moment. The other question is, I completely agree with all of my colleagues, especially when it comes to the culverts and storm drains. We don't want to do a quick patch. We want to do this right, even if it's more expensive, because that's how it'll last. That's how we avoid future events like this. As to the washouts, I am a little curious as to whether it makes sense to do a full repave if we know we're going into hurricane season, when those roads are going to take a beating? Or whether it makes sense to do a patch until the fall and then fix it more thoroughly so that we don't run the risk of a freshly paved road getting water damaged if we get, you know, the tail end of a hurricane or something? And I would like it if Commissioner Erickson could weigh in on that.
I'd be happy to. Thank you, President Zarella. Our approach, our anticipated approach right now is to patch the open ditches, holes, excavation sinkholes, however you want to classify them, especially in areas that are on inclines as quickly as possible because of the threat of rain during hurricane season specifically. Today was a perfect example. You know, I want to say around 4:30, the skies opened up. I'm not sure exactly how much rain we received, but it was a significant amount and it was pretty intense for a brief period. If we continue to leave these excavations open, these holes, trenches, ditches, however you want to call it, we'll continue to get washouts and the situation will worsen. So our strategy right now is to temporarily stabilize everything that's been exposed, washed out by any means necessary, then implement the drainage upgrades and repairs, and then come in and do the final restorations. And in doing so, that protects the city's investment in what will be those final restorations by guaranteeing that those drainage systems are adequately sized and properly functioning. So it's, it's an iterative approach. And I think that's, that's the approach we have to take. The other option, if we end up going with the patch it and move on method, is to just patch everything, get it all buttoned up as quickly as possible and then, and then leave it. And then the residents are stuck with, you know, very poor-conditioned roads in areas that already had relatively rough roads. All that being said, we do have some areas of the city that we anticipate upcoming construction. So we have combined sewer separation projects happening in a very large area of the city north of Main Street. We have water main projects that are in design right now for Main Street and Boulder Drive. We have a drainage and roadway reconstruction project in design right now for John Fitch Highway. We have an intersection redesign going on for John Fitch at North Street. So all of these areas where we anticipate construction, we obviously don't want to implement any, any sort of permanent or expensive repairs. And we're going to be very mindful of that as we continue to move through this process. But like I said, the approach is to get everything patched together right now immediately so that washouts don't continue over the next month or two. Come up with our drainage designs, implement those designs, and then restore everything and get everything back to looking good and functioning well.
Thank you very much. That makes good sense and I'm glad you were able to lay that all out. I appreciate the forward-thinking approach. Next, I have Counselor Dina Towey.
The stabilization fund is specifically for one-time expenses and it is a safety net for unforeseen expenses or emergencies. The city of Fitchburg 15 years ago had $10,000 in that account. What happened to that money before 2008 was prior city councils and mayors would raid that fund to pay for general operating expenses. That's why in '08, when the economy crashed all over the country, we had nothing in there. And that's why we had street lights shut off, libraries shuttered, police and fire decimated. Because that economic collapse of the country, that major recession, they called it the Great Recession, biggest recession since the Great Depression, the city was not prepared to withstand the massive lack, loss of revenue, particularly from the state government. And so that's what had to happen. Since that time, the stabilization fund is now over $8 million, the highest it's been in over 30 years. And I think people lose sight of the fact that 15 years ago, we had nothing. So where would we be today if we still had nothing? So all of these concerns tonight are all speculative at best. We don't know if we're going to get reimbursed from the state. I would like to believe there's a high likelihood we will in some manner or form. This was a major weather event that no one could have predicted, yet there are morning morning quarterbacks who pretend as if we could have been prepared for this. I don't know if the commissioner is a soothsayer, but I don't think he knew this was going to happen. And so while it stinks that we would have to use stabilization, this is precisely what it's there for. And anyone in the city with even a modicum of objectivity would understand that if we had to take half of it out because of God Almighty, then so be it. That's what it's there for. And if people don't like that, then where are you going to cut $5 million? Want to get rid of the DPW? Want to get rid of the, see, no one answers that question because they don't have a clue. So the stabilization is there for this exact purpose. And if it weren't for the previous administration, this administration, and city councils putting money into that fund, we would be in a world of hurt. It would be 2008 on steroids. And so I can go to sleep at night knowing that worst-case scenario, we have the money in the bank to cover these expenses. Would the residents of this city and councils prefer we didn't have the money? So I get agitated about it because I was here in '08. I saw what happened. We had no money in stabilization. No one else has any idea what we went through. This city is positioned to withstand an emergency like this and we're going to get money back. We're going to get money back unless the state wants to penalize us for what Mother Nature wrecked on us that we didn't ask for. So I would like to wait and see what we can get for reimbursement before we worry about where the money's coming from. But worst-case scenario, it's going to come out of stabilization and I'm fine with that because that's what it's there for. This isn't us raiding stabilization to pay for salaries. This isn't us raiding stabilization to pay for expenses, general expenses in our budget that our revenues can't handle. This is to cover expenses from a major weather disaster. And so it's not great. It stinks, but thank God we have it. And the residents of this city should be happy that we have it. This is why we have it. As to the credit agencies, if we take out of money stabilization, the credit agencies have analyses of why governments take out stabilization. They don't just say, well, city of Fitchburg took out stabilization, so they're bad and we need to downgrade. No, their analysts look at why, what precipitated the debit. Fitchburg 15 years ago got a almost junk bond status rating because the mayor and the city council at that time were using, I'm repeating myself again, they were using anticipated free cash to balance a budget. Money they didn't have. They said, we've got a budget of $3 million more than our revenues. We're just going to assume we're going to have $3 million in free cash next year. So let's move forward. That's not what we're doing here, not even close. And credit agencies saw that and said, you got to be downgraded. You guys are crazy. You're using stabilization to cover operating expenses. If we have to use stabilization for this.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Counselor, I have a point of order. Counselor?
Mr. President, we have gone so far away from talking about the resolution. We're talking about history and that, we should discuss.
At the moment, he is talking about the use of stabilization for this matter. So I'm going to, that will not be a sustained point of order. Counselor, continue.
Very much, thank you very much, Mr. President. So the credit agencies are not going to penalize us for the use of these funds, given the circumstances. And so I just want to make people who are concerned about that walk off the ledge. Okay? We have a history of stabilization usage that has been abused. This is not that instance. So I will be prepared to assess as a one-voting member what the go-forward plan is, once we know what that is. But after hearing the statements from Representative Koushmerik today and State Senator Cronin, and because of the fantastic relationship the city has with Congresswoman Treyhan, our U.S. senators, and the governor's office, I'm confident that these folks will arrive at a solution that will have the least pain possible to the taxpayers of the city. And if and when we know exactly definitively what that is, then we can worry about the details after that. But worst case, we have coverage and thank God that we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Broshman, speaking for the second time.
For the second time? Yeah.
Second time.
I just want to tell the mayor and Mr. Erickson, the commissioner, I want it done right. I think the people in my ward want it done right. I don't want to patch it. I don't want a cheap job. I want it done right. The other thing, Mr. Commissioner, what can the people of Fitchburg do to help out? I mean, I drove around too and I noticed a lot of catch basins full of debris, not in the hole on top of it where the water couldn't flow in and then it, water goes down to the lowest point downhill. What would you suggest to them if they, if they could help us out by cleaning the catch bay?
If constituents were offering assistance, I would suggest that prior to or just at the start of any rainstorm, that they take a rake and just rake off any catch basin top that might be in front of their business or residence. That would be of extreme help to the DPW. We've got over 7,000 catch basins in the city. Prior to large storm events like this, I assign staff to go around and check catch basins in problem areas, check culverts, et cetera. Despite our best efforts, as soon as it starts raining, any debris that's on the roadways and driveways, et cetera, washes into these catch basins, gets caught in the top of those grates. And that clogs the grates up and prevents water from going into the storm system, oftentimes causing flash flooding. Particularly because the city is so hilly, that would be an extreme help to us in our operations. And I think that would reduce flash flooding in certain areas of the city. I can't reliably expect constituents to do that. Same thing with troubling snow off sidewalk and other issues. But if someone was looking for a way to help, that would be my suggestion. And be forever grateful to any resident willing to do that for us.
And my final question, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Erickson, did I hear you say correctly when we're doing the water sewer separation, are we going to be putting the sewer lines big enough to handle heavy rainfall? Because all you hear on TV is about climate change and downpours that's going to affect this.
Counselor, yes, he did say that.
You did say that?
He did say that they have projected out to 2070 in terms of expected rainfall.
Yeah, I know, but is he going to put big enough pipes in to handle it?
That, yes, that's, that's what that means.
Okay, all right, all right, then. I yield the floor.
Counselor Schultz, second time.
I just have one question for the city auditor, if she could come up. You mentioned earlier that if we had to borrow the money, if FEMA didn't come through and the state didn't come through, do we have the capacity to borrow $5 million or could exceed $5 million? Do we have that capacity for 10 years?
No, I don't think we do, but maybe a portion of it if we had to.
A portion of it?
Yeah.
How much do you think we could borrow?
I really can't say right now. I'd have to do a study of what's coming up. Yeah, I know it's pretty tight. We're already putting money in stabilization to then put into that, to the debt service budget. So it's going to be tight no matter what. Um, but we'll have to just balance it with the other, the other, um, needs out there.
Thank you.
It'll be part of the equation.
I yield the floor.
Any further questions, comments?
Make your motion, will you, Seth?
Second. All right, I have a motion and second. We need a two-thirds majority to declare an emergency in the City of Pittsburgh. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
President Sorala?
Yes.
Counselor Boshman?
Yes.
Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Dinatelli?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
All yesses.
All right, uh, that passes unanimously.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and thank you, Commissioner Erickson. I know you're on vacation. Thank you for being here with us. Uh, no?
He came back.
Oh. Well.
Yep. Not on vacation, just, um, wasn't able to attend the meeting in person tonight, unfortunately, but thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you this evening.
Thank you very much. And thank you then for cutting your vacation short to handle these events. Uh, next, we have the report of the Finance Committee. Counselor Dinatelli.
Mr. President, would you like to provide the minutes?
I'm sorry, thank you, yes.
In my absence?
I, uh, I covered, uh, chairing the Finance Committee meeting this last week and then promptly forgot that I had done so. There were three members in attendance, myself, Counselor Squalia, and Counselor Boshman. Uh, we took up four items, uh, all of which were adopted unanimously. I'm just going to go through them very briefly. One was a community development block grant for food insecurity assistance uh, and community development, uh, for, uh, business loans and grants, both related to COVID-19, transferred to COVID-19 rental and utility assistance. This was explained to us as simply that there was less need in the prior-to accounts, uh, in the public, and most of the need remaining was in rental and utilities. Uh, then we had $57,651 transferred from the CDBG Year 47 Streetscapes Project and credited to Year 48 Parks and Playgrounds. Again, just money that wasn't needed in the first account and would be useful in the second account. Um, let's see, and then we had two separate, very similarly named grants, the Greening the Gateways Cities Program Implementation Grant and the Greening the Gateway Cities Program Partnership Grant. Uh, the first of which is going to be used, uh, for tree planting uh, in largely Coolidge and Park Hill Parks. And the latter of which is for tree planting in, I believe it's, uh, environmental justice areas in the city. Um, as I said, all of those were unanimously adopted.
Make a motion, will you, Seth?
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, it is unanimously approved. Uh, we have oh. Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Uh, we now have two public hearings. They will be conducted separately. Um, these, the first, 20123, Unitil to petition for a new pole, number 22A on Beach Street, approximately 260 degrees, uh, north of Pratt Street, and approximate, oh, I'm sorry, feet, that's feet, not degrees. Uh, and approximately 43 feet south of La Flame Place, as outlined in the enclosed petition. I now declare the hearing open.
Good evening. John Kimball, representing Unitil. The, uh, purpose of this pole is to make it so that we can get electrical power to a future development outback. Right now, if we had to come off the other poles that are on, in place, we would have to trespass in other people's property, and obviously, we do not want to do that. And we can't do that. So we would propose to put the pole back far enough, ADA compliant, so that way, uh, because it's on the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
So that way, wheelchairs and such can get by. And that way, we can supply power to the, uh, future development.
All right, Counselor Boshman?
Is the pole going underneath the ground?
Yes, it is.
It is?
It is after this pole. Once we have this pole, then it's going to go underground from there.
From there. Because I saw the circle where you put it on the sidewalk. It was in the middle, then you moved it back.
Yes, I did. I did move it to make it ADA compliant.
Now, let me ask you a question. Since the, since the property owner owns that piece of land, how come you don't put the pole on right off the sidewalk and onto his property?
Because of all the other buildings or all the other homes, we would have primary wires at high voltage going over their properties because of the angle it would create.
Well, we can't go from, when I was up there, we can't go from the, uh, should I put in that pole and you get the driveway to the right and go underneath the ground? And use that first pole to the right, it's about, you're talking about 18, 20 inches, 20 feet away from the original pole you're talking about?
I can't do that due to angles of bringing in the cables.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
Even if you didn't?
Otherwise, I, I would, uh, have gone with that, sir.
But everything else is going underneath the ground, huh?
Hundred percent.
All right. I wasn't too happy with the pole going on the brand-new sidewalk.
And we will repair and replace that whole panel.
Are you going to seal around the circle of the pole so this way here, we won't have overgrowth coming through like we have on Franklin Road and throughout the city? We got a Christmas tree throughout the city.
Yes, we will seal it.
You will? All right.
Thank you. And, uh, I was just reminded by the solicitor and just wanted to make sure that this was on your radar. Uh, city code requires that a secondary conduit be put in for municipal purposes. That will be done as part of the underground work for municipal purposes. Coming off, so coming off that pole, where, where would we, where would the contractor have to put that con? I'm not familiar.
Anywhere where there's a conduit that you're running underneath the ground for your own purposes?
Oh, yeah, he's, he has to run too.
You'll run a second one in for.
Yes. Yeah, that way, there's not disturbance in the future.
Yeah.
Right, okay, just wanted to double-check on that. Understood.
Because he's going to complain if he doesn't get it.
You're going to get it.
Okay.
Uh, any further questions or comments?
I got a question for the, uh, city solicitor. Dude, I thought it was just on, uh, major roads and that. Is that on private property that they have to put a double? Is this going to be a private driveway?
Oh, okay, no, not necessarily if it's a private driveway.
I can't hear you.
Not necessarily if it's a private driveway.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, and I wasn't sure if this was going to be an adopted road by the city. So that's why I err on the side of caution.
Entrance into the parking lot. I think entrance into the condos. Okay.
Over here?
Yeah. Right over here.
Yeah.
Any further questions or comments from counselors? All right, uh, is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Any in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. The matter is now before the council.
I'll make a motion, will you, Seth, as long as we make it very clear that the lines go underground.
We've, we've heard that that is the plan.
Second.
Yes.
I have a motion and second to approve 20123. If there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Next, we have public hearing on 20223, Unitil to install conduit from existing pole number six, approximately 400, uh, 245.3 feet south along Old Princeton Road and approximately 155.6 feet west to the Flag Pond Substation for the purpose of installing fiber optic service line as outlined in the enclosed petition. I now declare the hearing open. And you may proceed.
So Unitil, we're, we will install conduit from Old Princeton Road, pole number six, to Flag Pond Substation for the purpose of having Verizon install fiber optic communication line. Verizon will no longer support or maintain the existing copper line service. Therefore, the line must be replaced. The pole number six is at the end of the paved road, and the chosen route of the new conduit will pass along the unpaved portion of the road and enter the substation near the large rolling gate.
Counselor Squalia?
So this is the situation where you would have a double conduit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments from counsel? Anyone in the audience, uh, wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone in opposition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed, and the matter is before the council. Motion to accept.
Second.
I have several motions and several seconds to approve 20223. If there is no objection, it is unanimously approved. Thank you. Have a great night. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Orders Finance, and I have a request for suspension of the rules on 205 through and including 21023.
Subr.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for a two-thirds vote?
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
President Sorala?
Yes.
Counselor Boshman?
Yes.
Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Dinatelli?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
That is unanimous? All right, so 20523, order that the City of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the FY24 Infectious Disease Investigation and Response Grant in the approximate amount of $240,000 for the purpose of said grant, which is to support disease investigators, a portion of the disease investigator supervisor, supervisor and disease resource coordinator to provide infectious disease investigation and response in all 13 communities of the Monticentus Public Health Network. Director Curry?
Good evening, counselors. Uh, counselors, there is some misconceptions about this grant. There are no, there is no support for vaccination, uh, in this grant. It is simply to support, uh, the investigation of disease and, and appropriate response to that and to, to allow, uh, adequate staffing to cover uh, the City of Pittsburgh as well as the 12 other towns in the Monticentus Public Health Network. Simple as that.
Counselor Squalia?
So this does not include contact tracing for COVID or other infectious diseases necessarily?
It would if there were a cluster in, in identified facilities such as a healthcare facility or a childcare facility. Uh, there would be contact tracing. There are several other, other diseases in this world that require contact tracing, not just COVID. So contact tracing would be provided, depending on the disease that, uh, was presented.
But for just a, an individual that contracts COVID, there would not be contact.
There is no, there hasn't been for, for quite some time now. There is, there is no contact tracing on individuals.
Thank you.
Counselor Kucher?
So very briefly, so prior to COVID, we had, uh, the, the city nurse as well as, you know, other, um, healthcare professionals doing this. Since COVID, we've had to now expend what seems to be 240,000, you know, in, in, well, contract tracing, if that's what you want to call it. What's the change?
It, it provides adequate staffing and, uh, appropriate staffing for some of the diseases. Uh, I'll use tuberculosis for an example. Um, over the spring, we actually had, uh, six cases of tuberculosis. Four of them were in Pittsburgh. One was in Leamester, one was in Gardner. Some of them were related. Now, uh, tuberculosis, if you're not familiar, requires, uh, direct observation therapy, which means we have to witness medication-taking daily. Now, one person couldn't be in all those places daily, obviously, 24/7. So we prepare for cases like that. Uh, we are preparing for, for situations like that and scenarios like that. As well as we can do a little bit more in-depth, uh, disease investigation, uh, with an epidemiologist onboard, um, looking at trends, disease trends, and taking things a little, a bit deeper than, than, than what we could, um, do with our present staff or our staffing in the past, rather.
But we had tuberculosis before COVID, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And, you know, I, I mean, you know, you know.
Not every community has a, a, a disease investigator or a nurse on staff, and some, some towns in the MPHN do not have any staffing.
So, and prior to COVID, who would take that up?
Uh, we have been, uh, taking it up for the last 10 years.
And these, these funds will provide the funding in order to provide the, uh, towns that are in the Monticentus Public Health Network with, you know, uh, appropriate, appropriate staffing?
They will have eligibility to an epidemiologist, a nurse, as well as disease investigators. Um, and we would provide them the appropriate, we would also make them available to a, uh, a resource coordinator. So if somebody was to uh, have, be forced to isolate, um, or, or something that, uh, would, would cause financial or difficulties to do, uh, the coordinator would help set up that person with assistance for whatever that assistance need is.
I yield the floor. Thank you. Uh, because I saw some eyebrows go up, I'd like to just ask a clarifying question. Uh, you said if someone were forced to isolate, you're talking about forced by circumstance, not forced by government, correct? Uh, so none of this money would go towards anything coercive in nature?
That is correct. It would only support the salary of the individual trying to provide the assistance.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Uh, Counselor Fleming?
Yeah, what are the 13 communities that we're talking about?
They are Pittsburgh, Leamester, Clinton, Princeton, Sterling, Gardner, Hubbardston, Phillipston, Royalston, Athol, Sterling. Did I already say Sterling? I lost my count. Templeton and Hubbardston in Winchandon.
So I guess, why is it that Pittsburgh is responsible for this, for all these other communities? Why is Leamester not taking this on or Gardner? Which is, there are cities just like ours. Why, why is Pittsburgh taking on the responsibility of all 13 communities?
Counselor, this was a regionalization grant that was started in 2009. Uh, at that time, uh, the City of Pittsburgh was, was in a better position than the City of Leamester or the City, the City of Gardner to take on that regionalization project.
Oh, we were in a better position than Leamester? That's interesting. Okay, I yield the floor.
Thank you. Um, any further questions, comments from counselors?
Move to approve 20523.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve. Uh, is there any objection? One objection, all right, so, uh, all in favor? Actually, I'm sorry, because we have remote, we do need to do a roll call for this. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
President Sorala?
Yes.
Counselor Boshman?
Yes.
Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Dinatelli?
No.
Counselor Fleming?
No.
Seven yesses.
All right, passes seven to two. Uh, next, we have 20623, order that be in hereby is appropriated, the sum of $63,080 uh, from Reserve for Appropriation PEG Access and credited to Information Technology Franchise Fee for the purpose of paying FATV for the 2022 Fee for the purpose of paying FATV for the 2022 PEG Grant Proceeds Received from Verizon. If the counsel is willing, I'll spare our IT director explaining this for the fourth or fifth time. This is the same exact appropriation that we do every year, just to transfer the money that FATV is already entitled to, but that used to go directly to them, and then the state started saying it had to go to us to them.
Move to approve 2023.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to see him come up and sweat a little bit.
Let's, let's, let's not indulge sadism here, counselor.
Second.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 20623. Any objections? Seeing none, it is unanimously approved. 20723, order that there be and hereby is transferred from within fiscal 2023 accounts, the sum of $228,000. With permission of counsel, I will waive the reading of the individual account it's being transferred from, and note that it's going to Employee Benefits Medicare and Employee Benefits Health Insurance.
Thank you. Yes, and also the next order includes health insurance, so the-
Actually, in that case, if you'll let me just read that one off real quick. If there's no objection, we'll take up 20823 at the same time. That's order that there be and hereby is transferred from within fiscal 2023 accounts, the sum of $36,500, same to be transferred from miscellaneous general insurance and credited to miscellaneous Medicare building commissions in the amount of $4,500, and Employee Benefits Health Insurance in the amount of $32,000. Auditor Cronin?
Thank you. So our health insurance budget at the end of the fiscal year was short $175,000. So, these, these other accounts up above workers' comp, unemployment, we had excess funds, so we're just asking for a transfer from those to cover the health insurance. The second account that was, had a shortfall is the Medicare account. That's basically, it's 1.5% of everyone's payroll. Back in, if you were hired before 1986, the city did not have to pay that, but it's, I think, we don't have many employees left from pre-1986. So pretty much our entire payroll is subject now to Medicare. And in the second, in 20823, there's also a, a transfer into a miscellaneous account for Medicare billing commissions. That, that represents a commission that we pay for the collection of Medicare proceeds. So it's a 4% commission, and the good, you know, the good news on that is that we did have a, a pretty sizable Medicaid reimbursement this year.
Questions from counsel?
Move to approve 207 and 20823.
All right, I have a motion and second for 207 and 20823. If there is no objection, they will be approved unanimously. They are approved unanimously. 20923, order that there be and hereby is transferred from within fiscal 2023 accounts, the sum of $9,000, same to be transferred from Election Registration Personal Services election workers and credited to the following accounts: City Council Expenses, $2,500; City Clerk Expenses, $500; Election Registration Expenses, $6,000.
Okay, so these are to cover shortfalls in the City Council Clerk and Election Expenses. I think, in terms of the City Council, I think it was mostly advertising again, we were before you once before for that. And I believe the election and registration expenses, I think it has to do with the street listing. I don't know if it was postage costs or, but that was over.
And I'd just like to note again for the public that when you hear the word "advertising" in connection with this, we're talking about the legally mandated publication in the paper of agendas, petitions, certain, certain items that we are required to post. We're not talking about marketing the city council. Counselor Bushman?
One quick question for Jackie. My question to you, don't we get reimbursed from the state for these elections? No, yeah. Or is it just the state elections in the presidential?
Yes, we do, but that isn't related to these transfers.
Yeah, but I thought you said it was a shortfall.
Well, it was for actually a line item in that budget, but it wasn't the election itself. It was the street listing, is that under that? Yeah.
And then you what?
The street listing.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Move to approve 20923.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second on 20923. Seeing no objections, it is approved unanimously. 21023, order that there be and hereby is transferred from within fiscal 2023 accounts, the sum of $350, same to be transferred from Veterans Benefits General and credited to Veterans Benefits, Veterans Expenses, Temporary Personal Services.
Yeah, again, this is a shortfall, is an unexpected line item, and by the end of the year, it had been overdrawn $350.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve. If there is no objection, it is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
We have one loan order in first reading, 21123, and bear with me here, a loan order that the city appropriate the amount of $2,149,149 for the purpose of paying costs of the boiler replacement at Arthur Longshow Middle School located at 98 Academy Street, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, which proposed repair project would materially, materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the city may be eligible for a grant from Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the Pittsburgh Public Schools. To meet this appropriation, the Pittsburgh City Council is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The city acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the city incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the city, provided further that any grant that the city may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 80% of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA or the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the city and the MSBA. The treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Chapter 44A of the General Laws any or all of the bonds authorized by this order and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require for these purposes. No, I cannot repeat that.
Move to approve 21123 and send through its first reading.
On the, on the motion, may I ask Mr. Roth some question?
Whoa, counselor?
I think there was no second.
Okay, so you are willing to withdraw, though?
Withdraw.
Okay.
I just got one quick question. Can you tell me so far how much we spent towards the Longshow, a total wrap-up?
So, right now, as you can see, there are see-through windows being installed. That was a great question by one of the students, when we were, they were told that there would be new windows in the entire facility this summer. Will they be see-through? That was the question. Yes, they will. That's $4.8 million, 80% reimbursement rate from Mass. School Building Authority. This, this we did certify as 80% for this particular boiler project, $2.149 million. We do, we have hired an architect to develop a schematic design to reopen the auditorium. We would like to do that, obviously. GNAP is the, is the architect that's, that will get started on that. Don't know what the cost estimate of that will be. I will say the assessed value did increase recently from $17 million to $36 million, which allows us a lot more flexibility to avoid the 30% rate, which is essentially, if you put more than 30% into repairs and renovations of a building, you have to then bring it into complete compliance with ADA, which might require an elevator somewhere, which would just, you know, could be exponential costs. We did a sprinkler project that was $225,000 about a year and a half ago. We are planning to update all of the locking mechanisms in the interior doors. There are 100 doors that we would like to do mortise locks, those are quick-access interior locks with thumb. That'll be about $150,000 to do that most likely, complete installation. So, we're, we're certainly over the current 30% on the $17 million assessment, but with the increase, we're, we're fine now. So, once I get the auditorium cost estimate in likely two months, I would say, I, I'll have a better sense, but currently about $7 million.
About $7 million, is that counted on the roof?
That does not even include the roof, which was, which was outside of that 30%. So that's a three-year window of time in terms of improvements, renovations, that type of thing. That roof was pre-pandemic, I want to say 20-
It was like 2.5, I believe.
Yeah, I think it was, it was approximately, it was in the 2.5 to 3 range, is my understanding. And then the solar installation really doesn't cost us anything. It's the, one of those solar agreements that is expanded over 20 years, so, yeah, I mean, with that, you're getting towards 10 million.
That's what the city paid, put in, what, you guys, 10 million total?
No, because-
Oh, is that talking about the 80% from the-
80% is the reimbursement rate for the window and door project, all exterior windows and doors this summer. It'll be 80% on this boiler as well, the 2.149 million. The auditorium, you know, we're looking at some different funding streams, which would be, you know, using some of the ESER funds. So those need to be encumbered by September 30th, 2024. There may be some extension to that, you know, in terms of like, there are a lot of schools, school systems across the country that are struggling to expend all of those elementary and secondary emergency, emergency relief funds that were released in three phases, the most recent phase, $16 million. So, you know, we, we intend to use some of those funds on auditorium, because in some, in many respects, it meets the criteria for that. Some of the other, some of the other smaller projects, like the locking mechanisms, though, massive in terms of safety and security for the facility, we would look to do our capital line item for that.
All right, all right, I yield the floor, I just wanted to know.
All right.
Move to approve 21123 and send through its first reading.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
President Sorella?
Yes.
Counselor Bushman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Di Natale?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
And then yeses.
It is unanimous. Next, we have ordinances in final reading. 19823, this is the ordinance adding no parking zones to Industrial Road. And Steven, Industrial Road, Stevens Road, Game On Way. Any questions from councilors? This is one that we've approved before. This is just its final reading.
Move to approve 19823 and send through its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second to pass this through its final reading, to be enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Counselor Squalia?
Oh, aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
President Sorella?
Yes.
Counselor Bushman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Di Natale?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. 19923, this is adding tow zones to Roper Road and Victoria Lane. This also is in its final reading, we have approved it once before. Counselor Squalia?
Yes, so Counselor Bushman pointed out that Scripture Road doesn't actually exist in the city of Pittsburgh, and it is not in our streets list, and it looks like it might have been an old road, but it does exist within the Pittsburgh City Code 16999. So I would suggest that we continue to pass this, and if we want to adjust that in the future, then we bring this forth with a new ordinance to reflect the updated road, you know, listing within the-
I just want to make- I would agree.
All right, but I just want to make it, I didn't pick up on that. I got a phone call from my friend, Don Donley.
Ah, okay.
So I just want you to know, I'm not that smart.
Your predecessor as records chair-
Right.
So move to approve 19923 and send through its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
President Sorella?
Yes.
Counselor Bushman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Di Natale?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And we have one final one, this is another no parking amendment, adding no parking zones to Charles Street. This is, again, in final reading.
Move to approve 223 through its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised.
Second.
Motion and second. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
President Sorella?
Yes.
Counselor Bushman?
Oh, yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Di Natale?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
It is unanimous. We have one petition from Counselor Schultz on behalf of Jimmy Cordero to request an improved berm on Forest Street. That will be sent to Public Works. Other business, this is the resolution of Counselor Di Natale regarding waste management. The purpose of this on the agenda this evening is simply to set a date, and I spoke with the counselor earlier today, and he recommended a date in September. Do we have a listing of our council meetings in September? I think I have.
September 5th and September 19th, we have city council meetings.
I'm going to suggest the 19th, simply because when we come back from the break for the 5th, there may be a backlog of things for us to deal with. So, if there is no objection, we will schedule 4623 to be taken up in full on the 19th, at which point I hope we will have representatives of waste management here before us. All right, that concludes our agenda in open session for this evening. We now need to take a vote to convene into executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Sub 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, specifically to review for release the executive session meeting minutes of May 4th and simultaneously this evening's minutes.
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to enter into executive session. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
President Sorella?
Yes.
Counselor Bushman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Di Natale?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
All right, we now need the gallery cleared. Thank you for coming. I'm sorry to have to kick you guys out, but have a great evening.
You got it.
We're going to give some time for our guests to clear out and for FATV to shut down recording, but I'm told we will still have microphones.
Ooh.
Can we take a short break? Yes, certainly, we need time anyway, so we are in executive session and in a brief recess. We need time anyway, so we are in executive session and in a brief recess.